This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, today is Wednesday, March 9th, 2020-22. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. Again, I would like to welcome everybody this evening, especially our guests. If we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk, could I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Fox?
Present.
Councilmember Casper?
Present.
Councilmember Boyle?
Present.
Councilmember Strobin?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
Present.
Mayor Thornton?
Present.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
So moved, seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Thank you. This evening, we do have a presentation from Waste Connections of Washington. And this evening, the Clark County Saw Waste Program Manager, Travis Stutton, and Derek Ranta, the Regional Director for Waste Water, wait, excuse me, Waste Connections of Washington, will be presenting. So with that, I would like to turn it over to Mr. Dutton. And if you are trying to speak, you're muted. I don't see that Mr. Dutton is on the call, but I do see that Derek Ranta is here. Derek, you are muted. There we go. Okay.
Good evening, this is Molly Mangrich, Clark County. I can hear you folks?
So Travis, maybe you can help me out here. I think what we're going to do next is the presentation. Is that something you're still trying to get queued up here, or is there an issue?
I apologize, I was waiting for things. So I had used an incorrect link, so I apologize for being a little bit tardy, but I have the presentation up. If I have the ability to share screen, or if somebody else has the slides, we can jump into that.
Okay, I think you have that ability now. There we go. Thank you.
Thank you. And just, uh... Let me make sure I'm sharing the wrong screen. And while I'm pulling this up, I just wanted to introduce, we also have with us Derek Ranta from Waste Connections, Molly Mangrich from Clark County, and I believe Cindy Holloway is here also from Waste Connections. We just wanted to have the right folks in front of you to help answer questions and provide information. And I just really quickly wanted to clarify, while I find the right... The correct screen to share here is that the... It was requested that we make sure that we keep this under 30 minutes. Is that correct? Or at 30 minutes?
Yes, please.
Perfect. All right. Hang on one second. And also, Mr. Cast, it's very nice to see you again in a different capacity. And congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, bear with me while I try to make sure I share the correct screen here. All right, just to be sure, I can't see the room anymore because I have my notes on one and the presentation on the other, but could somebody give me a verbal confirmation that you have the power quote presentation up on your screen?
We do.
We do.
Yep, we have the first slide of Residential Recycling Collection Contract Update.
Perfect. Well, I will run through this material, given the fact that I've already taken six minutes of your time. So my name is Travis Stutton. I'm the Solid Waste Manager for Clark County Public Health. And wanted to provide you all with an overview of our current recycling contract structure in Clark County, and provide you with an update on a transition into a new contract as our current contract is expiring. So as I mentioned, I've got a couple of folks here so that we can make sure to answer any questions that you have. And if there are other additional questions, we're all going to be taking notes and we'll make sure to follow up with everybody here. So our main goal today is just to introduce the summary of the negotiated updates to the Residential Recycling Contract with Waste Connections for questions and your feedback. And the secondary goal that we can either accomplish today or likely in the future is to gain support from the Center City Council on these updated terms to this contract, and then we will move forward. And I'll highlight the changes, I'll highlight the current structure, and then highlight some next steps, and what this impact means to you and your residents in general. So... And again, I can't see, so if there are questions, I would appreciate just a, hey Travis, stop talking for a second, so I can... Just a verbal interruption would be great, so. So on the next slide, I'm going to go into what the contracts provide. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of background. The current contract expired, was set to expire on December 31st of 2021. Due to staff turnover and scheduling during COVID, that impacted our schedule. And so we are in the midst of a six-month extension right now that was added to allow for stakeholder engagement like this. So to date, we have done stakeholder engagement with our Solid Waste Advisory Commission, which is representatives from the various customer groups in the county that provide advisory capacity to our solid waste program. The Regional Solid Waste System Steering Committee, of which Brian had in the past been a member in his previous capacity, but the steering committee is made up of all the public works directors for all of the cities that participate in our solid waste system. And we meet twice annually to gather input and to support projects and gather feedback on the needs of the cities and town. And so with that feedback, Clark County staff work with Waste Connections to agree on key terms with our goal of having this new contract in place prior to July 1st of this year. So, just to give you a little bit of, a little bit of background. And also, this contract, the structure, it's a little, well, strange isn't the word, but in this structure, La Center receives residential recycling collection service from Waste Connections through this contract that the county negotiates via an inter-local agreement. So we currently operate under an inter-local agreement with La Center and the county to, in lack of a better term, piggyback on this contract to ensure that you get everything that we have negotiated and allow the county to administer that contract. So in Clark County, there are a couple of roles and ways in which to participate in the recycling collection system. So due to state law, Clark County, each county in Washington is required to develop and manage the solid waste system for the county, for the unincorporated parts of the county. Cities have options as to how they want to participate. So for the county, we procure the recycling collection service through contracts. We negotiate the contracts and we manage the contracts as well. So we provide all, you know, the county is responsible or obligated to provide all of that administrative and service provision for residential recycling throughout the county. Cities have an option. Cities can either participate in the county's recycling contract for recycling collection through an inter-local agreement. And right now, Battleground, La Center, and Yakult participate in our current contract through an inter-local. The other option is cities have the option to contract directly with a service provider for recycling collection. Canis, Waschugol, Ridgefield, and Vancouver currently contract directly. There are a few reasons for the variation. I know, for example, and since Brian is here, I might actually, I don't know if it's unprofessional, but I might ask you to speak to Ridgefield if you can, but I know with Canis, they haul their own materials for MSW, for garbage. And so having a structure that complements that element of utility service provided by the city. And I believe in, I know in Vancouver and Waschugol, the, those two places, Waschugol and Vancouver both had contracts with their, direct contracts with service providers for quite a while, and eventually those service providers were purchased by Waste Connections. So now their contract, I think Vancouver was with Waste Management before, or, well, they, the contract, the company in the contract was purchased by Waste Connections. Again, some of the benefits of signing on via inter-local are just, you know, allowing the county to provide that administrative service and reduce just contract management within your program. However, there are opportunities for a city to go out and contract directly for recycling collection services. And I don't know, Brian, I can't see your face, but would you, if you can, would you speak to what Ridgefield's decision might have been?
Sure. So that was, I think it's just been the status quo over there. As you mentioned, there is, you know, the disadvantages, there's a little bit more administration of that contract that the county takes for, takes care of under the inter-local agreement. The advantage is a little bit more local control. I wouldn't say that there's a huge difference in price or service level between the two different options, however.
Great, thank you. I'm going to pause for a second and just listen for people if they have any questions. My next slide is what the current contract provides, and then the subsequent slides are updates to that contract. But I just wanted to stop here and give folks a second to chime in. All right, not hearing anything. I'm going to move on. So the current contract for recycling collection provides curbside recycling collection within unincorporated areas of Clark County and participating cities. Service is currently provided weekly in urban areas such as La Center and every other week in rural areas of the county. The contract provides Waste Connection staff dedicated to outreach and education. And we work in partnership with the Waste Connections education staff to make sure that we're delivering outreach, education, and communication to the public that is consistent and supports engagement with the system and the opportunity for people to go above and beyond if they so choose. We also work with the city of Vancouver, who has a few solid waste staff as well to coordinate on regional outreach and education. This contract also sets expectations for how Waste Connections accomplishes outreach on behalf of the county, as well as other marketing strategies, newsletters, certain publication requirements, et cetera, so. It also establishes a list of materials that must be collected through curbside service and can only be adjusted under certain circumstances. So this contract sets the list for what folks are able to put into their curbside recycling bin and what they cannot. And also, in order to change that, there's quite a few mechanisms in place. In order to change that, it has to be dependent upon a few very specific criteria related to cost, related to markets, et cetera. But this contract establishes that list of what can and cannot go into the curbside bin for recycling. It also sets customer service expectations, including expectations to maintain local and effective customer service. So Waste Connections through this contract maintains a call center that is inside Clark County. It's in our time zone. It's staffed by people that live in the area and are familiar with the system. And we chose to do that as an alternative to a call center somewhere else in the country and in order to ensure responsiveness and familiarity with our system. It also establishes current equipment expectations. So what trucks are used, what carts are used, and the criteria for that equipment, and then just anything else that's required for providing services. And the last thing that the contract currently provides, since initially this contract was negotiated, the contract that we're currently under, the contract allowed for, or provided free collection of recyclables from all Clark County facilities and parks. So what that meant is that any Clark County office, building, park that wanted to implement curbside or commingled recycling could do so at no cost to remove cost as a barrier for recycling here at the county.
Travis?
Yes.
This is Liz Servini. Are there any discussions going on about incorporating food waste?
There are, yes. I think the main barrier we have right now is transfer capacity. So, and what that means is we need space large enough to, once Waste Connections has collective food scraps from the curb like they do in Ridgefield or the city of Vancouver, they have to be consolidated at our transfer station. And presently, capacity is limited to only a few municipalities. But right now, through some of our other contract work, and would probably be another conversation that would definitely throw me way past my 30-minute timeline. But we are looking at opportunities and trying to find capacity for increased food diversion. Especially because the state recently just, just passed a bill targeting 75% of food waste going to the landfill, finding alternative compost or reduction methods by 2030. So the short answer is yes. The long answer is we are trying to address it in a way that would allow for the entirety of the county to have that service. But also just meeting cities where they are right now. I think, you know, the city of Vancouver has that service, and they were able to get that through their contract. And the size of the quantity of the material that they were generating, same with Ridgefield. But we know the other cities are looking to accomplish food waste diversion, and it's something we want to accomplish. And the main thing standing in our way is capacity, and we are working on that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. So, contract updates. One of the, these are the changes. So that previous slide highlighted what the contract provides now. The, this new contract will provide the same recycling collection service. However, there are some updates, and this is really where we wanted to dig in and start to get questions and input and feedback so that we can ensure that you feel like, that we have met the expectations of the stakeholders that would sign on to this agreement via inter-local. The first one, and one of the biggest ones that we need to talk about, is a transition from those areas that are currently having their recyclables collected weekly. We would be transitioning those customers to every other week, collection of recyclables in urban service area. And what that means, not to diminish the impact of a change like this, but we would be aligning it with the rest of the county and their collection frequency. And really just making sure that service levels are consistent across the county. And there's quite a few reasons we are looking at this as a benefit. One, it maintains the current costs or rates that the ratepayers are paying while preserving the same level of service. And what I mean there is, I want to acknowledge it first that there's a perception, or it's, acknowledge it first that what I'm saying is that we're going to keep people's rates the same, and we're going to collect less frequently, or that that's what we are encouraging through this contract. However, what we have learned through cart weight studies, as far as how full people fill their recycling container on a weekly basis, as well as significant increases in costs since the previous contract was negotiated, in order to maintain the current service capacity and provide people with the same collection volume service without cost increases. Shifting to every other week creates a more efficient routing system that allows Waste Connections to keep costs where they are. It reduces the number of trucks that need to be purchased to service the area, which the fewer trucks we have, the less needs to be paid for through the system. And every other week, depending upon the communities we've talked to, these are pretty big trucks rolling weekly through streets. And it reduces the truck's impacts on road maintenance, local road maintenance, as well as air quality. And through the system, just to kind of go back to that first bullet about maintaining system, is if you currently have a cart and you feel like you are unable to contain all of your recyclables in a cart for two weeks, the opportunity to right-size your container or increase your container size, or set out additional recycling adjacent to the container are also opportunities. But the whole goal here is to continue to provide the same level of service and preserve the rates where they are, and to be able to have less physical impact with more trucks out on the road. I want to stop there, just because I feel like this is definitely one where we wanted to talk a little bit about more in Battleground when we presented there two weeks ago. So I just wanted to stop, and I'm going to pause here. I'm going to invite Derek or Molly to chime in as well. But what questions or comments or thoughts are folks having after that first bullet?
Well, I'm having a hard time figuring out how the level of service is the same when you're coming every other week, but we're paying the same, same price.
Yeah.
And there's issues that have to be done, but that, to me, seems like it's a 50% cut in service.
Good, okay. That's exactly what I was hoping to dig into. So what our cart weight study showed us is most of our customer base is not filling their recycling containers up. So while they're seeing the trucks every week come to their house, pick up their recyclables, a majority of the customers that were studied throughout the county would actually, if their truck came twice a week, they would still be able to put out the same amount of recyclables. I guess what I'm saying is that it just allows people more time, so when a truck comes to pick up their material, the cart is fuller than if they picked it up every week. And if a customer is filling up their carts, so it provides you the same opportunity to have the same amount of recyclable material collected. It's just coming every other week. I don't think I'm nailing this explanation, but the other aspect is if you, for example, are putting out your recycling container and it is full every week, you have the opportunity to increase the size of your container so that you're not overflowing with recyclables. So we're providing the same volume pickup, or Waste Connections would provide the same volume pickup, but they would just be visiting your house less frequently because either you'd be filling up your current cart all the way prior to pickup, or you would enlarge the size of your cart at no additional cost and still be able to discard the same amount of recyclables. And I'm going to let Derek, I don't know, Derek, if you have something to add here to kind of help balance that out a little bit?
No, I think you, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think the issue is the, the volume is the same, the frequency would be, would be less, the volume would be the same. And that's the key point there.
What are the sizes?
I'm trying to find, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Liz.
What are the sizes of the carts going to be?
Customers would have the opportunity to upsize to 95 gallons. Or whatever size is appropriate, I would say.
And I think just to kind of show, well, no, let's stick, I'll stick with this, the service level. I think there was another question that somebody else wanted to share.
I was just trying to figure out how you guys came to the conclusion that people aren't filling up their recycling bins. Just driving through the neighborhood, I see a lot of them filled overflowing and also stacked off to the side. I know myself, I fill mine up, and in my neighborhood, I want to say 90% of the houses are filling them up. So I'm just trying to figure out how you guys came to that conclusion.
We can, we can provide some of the cart weight studies, but I think just surveying around the county, our data told us differently in that the cart space that's still available when a truck comes to pick it up is not as full as what you're, what you're seeing. Not that, I'm not saying you're incorrect, but I think we can probably provide a little bit more of that information to kind of show you what data we're using to show that information.
Sure, you kind of answered it when you said the survey around the county. So these aren't surveys from each of the different cities, these are county-wide and broke down that way. All right.
Yeah, this is, yeah, no, yeah, I apologize if I indicated it was specifically a La Center-focused study. This is a study that shows that throughout the county, so.
Hey Travis, this is Sean Boyle. I just wanted to say that, you know, just with the increase in online shopping and e-commerce, it seems like it's a little bit backwards. I mean, as far as for my family, you know, we do quite a bit of online shopping, especially through COVID and stuff, like the amount of cardboard that comes into my house every week is, you know, exponential than to what it was in years prior. So I just kind of don't really see that as, you know, a, you know, every other week schedule versus... For everybody is always overflowing, so.
I lost the second half. You broke up for the second half, but what I gathered, what I did hear was you recognize, like, mentioning the trend in online shopping and the disposal of more packaging from home. And I would also add just the general shift of waste and recycling not taking place at a workplace, given a large number of people working from home. And I think, you know, I think we need to come back to you with some more information on our study and what we're seeing, but I think the other thing that might be helpful is we can bring some examples, is that there are, you know, a majority of the places in the county are currently doing every other week recycling. And that even through this shift and fluctuations in the amount of recycling that, you know, especially around the holidays that come, it has still been a successful model. And I think the other piece that I want to highlight real quick, not to, not to digress from this point that folks want to talk about. But in order to maintain the current service level, the other option would be to discuss maintaining the weekly collection of service, but with, you know, we maintain annual inflationary adjustments to all of the utilities that we contract for. And in order to maintain the weekly service, moving forward with this iteration of the contract, the alternative would be a pretty significant monthly increase to ratepayers because we would need, Waste Connections would need, you know, six additional trucks. The average cost of a truck, which we expect, you know, a clean, functioning fleet in this contract, and trucks drastically need to be replaced. You know, those trucks have almost doubled in cost, as well as the average hourly wage for CDL drivers or staff in general. So I think we can also discuss the option of maintaining weekly service balanced against the every other week service and evaluate the monthly cost per home to maintain service levels the way that they are now from a frequency standpoint versus exploring... service levels the way that they are now from a frequency standpoint versus exploring a volume consistency and keeping costs the same. So that that would be another alternative and we can provide you with a greater breakdown. But recycling has gotten more expensive to accomplish as any service has. And in order to to not shock ratepayers with large rate increases, this every other week service allows us to maintain the volume level while protecting the the rates that the ratepayers are currently paying, so.
And and while I can appreciate what you're saying there, Travis, you know, trying to save the rates for people, I think people are pretty aware that rates are climbing like crazy just about in every aspect of life. The downside to it all is that we're trying to save the environment and recycling's become a way of life. And if you're overflowing with recycling and it's two weeks later, I think you guys are gonna find a lot more of the recycling going right into the trash can because people don't want to put up with it. They're gonna just throw it away instead, which defeats the entire purpose of recycling.
I I agree that while we are shifting towards more environmental topics and and I I guess I would ask what would be helpful as far as demonstrating some of these things because we've looked at lots of areas that including, you know, our own county and cities in our own county and large municipalities up and down Washington and Oregon that, you know, complete every other that that provide every other week service. And even during that shift, that type of, because recycling is important and because people will find a way to accomplish that, that is not a type of shift or behavior that 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 typically happens. Typically, there's the hump and the change and with a very clear and large outreach and education campaign on how to engage with the new schedule and with the new sized bins, that that feels like that has been the largest key, that has been one of the largest keys in creating a successful every other week recyclables collection, even within our own county. And so while I do appreciate, yeah, that 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 would be a very logical expectation and we're we're really looking to other areas that have done this exact same thing, again, even in our own county, to see what lessons they learned. And the the volume of recycling did not transfer over to the garbage can. People largely adapted to the new system and were still able to recycle the same amount and if not more, just because we've brought the topic up again to the public and in a big way communicated recycling and how to engage in the recycling system and the importance of recycling. And so it sort of creates like a like a hard refresh for some folks as well, so. But I I guess it would be helpful to hear, I know that I can tell you about examples until I'm blue in the face, but I do appreciate the fact that folks need proof and folks need information in front of them and a lot of you have never met me before. So I just want to make sure that, you know, what would be helpful in 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 kind of providing what information and what logic and reasoning behind this decision? And then also what would be helpful as far as taking a look at the alternatives between weekly and every other week service?
I think the positive aspect of it, Travis, is the opportunity for reeducation to the public on what is and what isn't recyclable and refine, you know, our thought processes in that respect. And also the opportunity to upscale, you know, upsize the container for free will be a big plus and perhaps drive better behaviors overall, you know, if it is approached, as you said, with a real solid outreach and education plan.
No, I, yeah, I I mean, I think it's always an opportunity. It's always great when we get a unique or special opportunity to talk to the public outside of our normal outreach and education and find a way to shake it up. But and so I appreciate that feedback for for other folks that that are feeling like they need to understand or need additional information. I'm curious, are there questions or things that you would like us to come back with or to provide to Maria or Brian in the interim so that you can discuss? The other thing, I guess before I leave that question out there is, the other thing is that Battleground is exploring the same conversation. And Mark Hersig with the Public Works Director in Battleground is speaking to other jurisdictions about their choices for recycling and and seeking to understand this a little bit more. So there may also be an opportunity to to connect with Battleground or or and sort of understand what information they have been pulling together in order to help them fully engage with and understand and respond to, you know, these contract updates that the county is is looking to implement.
Travis, what was the size of the recycling containers right now? I'm sorry if I didn't catch that.
Sixty, I believe sixty-four.
Sixty-four and that's on an every week pickup and then you guys want to go up thirty more gallons to ninety-four instead of doubling it to one-twenty, correct?
Correct, there is, I don't believe unless Derek says otherwise that there is a hundred twenty gallon container for residential curbside that we use. But again, that card study shows us that that effectively doubles the utilized space on average for recycling across the county. But yes, that fact is, that is true.
On a study that's through the county and not city by city, okay.
Correct, yes.
I'd probably be okay if I can get my wife to flatten the cardboard boxes.
I am not going to comment on any marital conversations that need to take place around how to manage your recycling. I've learned that lesson in a hard way, but anything we can do to help conserve space, that is true. So in the respective time, I wanted to check in, there are a couple other updates and then some next steps. However, I do realize you asked me to keep it to thirty minutes and I have used my thirty minutes and then some. I can probably go over these last couple of slides in five minutes and then, or I can cut it off now and follow up with Brian or Maria. So what what do you folks, what would folks?
You can keep going, Travis.
Please do keep going, Travis, yeah.
All right, I also acknowledge this is not a very exciting PowerPoint presentation either, so. So, second update, free recycling services for all government facilities and parks. So currently, again, that was only Clark County. So any city that is either currently or wants to pursue recycling services for their government facilities and parks would be able to do that at no cost. We are working on a solid waste outreach plan. So again, we have a growing, a very, I don't know what the last data is, but we're one of the fastest growing counties, I'm just gonna say in the country. I don't have any, again, report to back that up, but just the numbers that we're seeing. Our county is really growing and while we're taking a look at the infrastructure for our county and how to make it meet the growing needs, plus an increasing list of outreach needs coming from the state, like I mentioned, food waste legislation, recycling contamination legislation, landfill methane legislation, there's a lot of things that we need to start talking to our public about above and beyond what we're already talking about as far as making information available. So Waste Connections will be working with Clark County and the City of Vancouver and we will be starting to, rather than add people to our outreach and education program to keep costs where they're at, we are going to really just work on improving and getting a process in place for collaborative work plans that set priority topics and evaluate our outreach and education strategies regularly so that we can be agile and responsive to our community's needs. And just as quickly as recycling markets are changing, as quickly as materials themselves are changing, it's a really hard topic of conversation to stay on top of in entirety for how to communicate with the public and develop timely strategies. So that solid waste outreach plan will be part of this new contract and will outline how and what we prioritize as far as topics and and materials go and then how we talk about them with the public. And again, that's something we would engage with with our SWAC and our Regional Steering Committee to make sure that we're getting input and feedback from the the cities and stakeholder groups. The other thing this contract does is we had been piloting, we call them recycling advocates, but really they're out in the field outreach and education staff. Their job is to inspect recycling carts, just look in. And then depending on if they see things that should or should not be in those carts, they tag them with information on how to appropriately or how to properly engage with our solid waste system and our recycling system. It's not a a ticket or a fine, it's really just, you know, it's as close as we can get to the behavior we are trying to increase awareness around without hiding people individually inside of people's homes to watch them recycle. And they also get a chance to engage with residents who are home and especially during the pandemic with more folks being home. I know they've had some positive and negative interactions with the public, but it's 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 a resource that's out there in the public on a regular basis all throughout the county, just finding new ways to highlight parts of our system. So for example, if they see plastic bags or if they see bowling balls or clothing or dirty diapers, which are all of which things that show up in the recycling system, they just put oops tags on there. And the idea is it's a little bit different way to communicate with our public, it stands out, it's not typical, but it's not a penalty, it's just a different way to communicate. And if folks are there to talk, they will engage with the residents as well. So that formalizes it in the contract and makes funding and makes the position permanent through the contract. And the last thing is that this this contract, we will, Waste Connections will be piloting an electric collection vehicle. They will be piloting one in the county, they will also be piloting one for the City of Vancouver through their recycling contract. The idea here is to test out the durability and the efficiency of an electric truck pilot to see if they're durable and inform our future plans to develop a cleaner and more cost-effective fleet moving forward. So if they are a valid solution and a reliable, cost-effective solution to implement while also providing or reducing reducing greenhouse gases, that would be a direction we would go in the future. However, there's quite a few concerns about their resiliency. As frequently as the mechanics on a on a collection truck are used, whether or not it's durable enough, so. So those are the five primary updates to the contract, again, that first one being one of the largest ones. And then just, I'm gonna highlight next steps very quickly. So we are currently working, we presented to the City of Battleground and we're following up with some information for them. And as I mentioned, Mark Hersig, their Public Works Director, is reaching out to other cities who directly contract to understand their position. And we will also be having a steering committee meeting coming up in March where I'm assuming, coming up, I think next week, where I'm assuming we will talk about this a little bit more with the Public Works Directors. And then we will be going out to Yakult to have the same conversation the first week in April. Once we've gathered the feedback, once we have found, you know, some solutions to any concerns that folks have, or if a city decides to directly contract. So once we've gathered all that, we will reengage with Waste Connections to update any language or terms that are necessary. Then it would move to internal legal county review. And then we need to go back to our Clark County Council to share the stakeholder feedback updates and get their approval for the contract and then we will sign and execute. So as soon as the cities decide whether they want to sign on via interlocal, we will also simultaneously to that above or the previously mentioned task is start working through the interlocal agreement process to line up with the execution of the new contract. So we'll we'll reach out to the right folks if, depending on which direction Battleground, La Center and Yakult want to go, each of you would have your own interlocal agreement depending on which direction you decide to go. And then once the contract is in place, we begin to implement the changes that are agreed upon. So if every other week service is the direction that the community ends up supporting, that will require significant outreach and education efforts. And so we will start right away on building that outreach and education campaign. And I also forgot to mention that the carts that, Derek, can you highlight very quickly? Because I'm gonna rush through it, Derek, could you highlight very quickly the the garbage containers that will also be rolling out simultaneously with the every other week service that's separate from this contract?
Yeah, so garbage service in La Center is regulated as part of the Washington Utilities and Transportation tariff system. So we, Waste Connections, are automating the cities and the rural portions of Clark County. So we're gonna be converting everyone who has, you know, the handheld cans to roll carts in mid-July of 2022. We'll convert the urban growth portions of the county in 2023. So we're doing about about thirty thousand homes in 2022 and then another forty to forty-five thousand homes in 2023 and that'll allow people to utilize a roll system instead of instead of cans, which is a is a nice upgrade. So City of La Center would be included in that along with Battleground, Yakult and and like I said, the rural portions of the county.
And again, that's not part of this contract, but we are trying to make sure that those two things roll out in tandem so that there.
Yeah, if we're gonna make changes to the solid waste system, it's nice to do it all at once and make it as confusing as possible all at one time rather than confuse people multiple times. But that way we can consolidate our communication a little bit better and answer everybody's questions all at one time, we felt like so. It seemed to time, timing wise, it seemed to fit well.
Yeah, so like I mentioned, I think the last thing is I'll just end is that a lot of these changes will require pretty significant outreach and education efforts and, you know, kind of get that planning process started now. And then depending on which way we go, start to roll that out to make it a really big priority. The only other thing I would add really quickly is that we do partner with Waste Connections and the City of Vancouver on the Recycle A to Z app or the Recycle Right app. And that is what is used in the other cities in town in order to help folks get reminders on what their collection days are and which days are recycling days and which days are garbage days. And it's also a complete A to Z guide. You can just open it up and type in what you're looking to get rid of and it will tell you almost overly extensively what is, what options are available for you to discard material appropriately within the county or within the region, so. I'm gonna end this presentation and hit escape and see if I can figure out where everybody went and stop sharing my screen.
Travis, does this change yard debris at all?
Our yard debris contract is a completely different contract, so that will be coming up as a conversation, but currently that is not part of this contract and that is likely where the food scraps conversation will take place, is within the organics contract, the yard debris contract. So this will not impact yard debris, no.
And I believe that contract's coming up in 2023, so it'll be a pretty, pretty current conversation.
Thank you.
Yeah. Can I ask any other questions? Otherwise, should I, I can follow up with Maria. I just want to make sure I follow up with the right person to see if there are any lingering questions, any follow-up information that any of the council members need. I just want to make sure that, you know, we're sharing everything and that I provide you with whatever you need to make a decision that's best for La Center.
So, yeah, not hearing any questions, Travis. I just want to thank you for your presentation, it was very well done. Appreciate it. And yes, absolutely, Maria would be your contact person here in the city for any type of information or if council members want to reach out to Maria individually, we can get that information with Travis as well. So we can coordinate everything through Maria.
All right.
That should work.
I really appreciate the time, I appreciate the additional extra minutes and thank you very much and enjoy the rest of your meeting. And I will follow up Maria with you in the next couple of days or early next week, so. Have a great evening.
Okay, thanks again, Travis, appreciate it. Okay, we'll continue on with our agenda, council. Next thing on the agenda is citizens' public comment. Clerk, do we have any public comments for this evening?
Yes, Mayor, we have one.
Would you please read it?
Citizen comment is from Joanne Tucker. "Good evening, Mayor and council members. I would like to congratulate the city on moving into the new city hall and thank you for providing the recent city newsletter. While the purchase price of nine-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars for the TDS building was under the estimated assessed value, the city has had considerable expense in renovating the building that was purchased in 2018. Could you tell us what the full cost of the renovation of the new city hall has been? Please include all costs associated with..." Please include all costs associated with the project since 2018. This information should include the following costs associated with the renovation of the TDS building: fees including feasibility study, attorney fees, permits, licenses, county and state fees, off-site costs, loans, interest payments, accounting fees, CPA services, insurance and taxes, consultant fees involved in the purchase assessment, architectural services, design, planning and engineering, equipment, maintenance, replacement, inspection such as elevator and air conditioning, et cetera, interior furnishings, construction costs including all labor, materials and supplies, plumbers, electricians, masonry, estimated future annual repairs, maintenance and cleaning costs for the new city hall. The newsletter also stated that we received a grant for the construction costs. Was the $1.2 million only for the city hall construction or were there other projects included in that particular grant? Thank you very much. I look forward to the requested information and the opportunity to visit the new city hall in the future." And that is all for the comments.
Thank you. Okay, so yes, we don't have all that information prepared to answer that particular question this evening or public comment. So the city staff is putting those numbers together. And when we have that present, prepared council, we will be presenting it to the council. And of course, we will get Ms. Tucker the information as well, as well as the rest of the community. So appreciate that. Next is the mayor's report. I just have a couple of quick items here that I want to review with the council. First of all, a question. I just would like to know if council member Fox and if council member Boyle, have you received the AWC newly elected officials training yet?
I plan to take care of it this weekend.
Okay.
I have not done it as of yet, but it is on my urgent agenda.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it would be great if you could get that taken care of. That's not optional. That is mandatory that you do receive that training. So if you would please let Maria know when you have actually completed that training, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. And then the council may recall that I believe it was just last month, two separate city council meetings. I queried the city council as to what dates everyone would be available to have a city council retreat. We went through quite a bit of discussion on that, offered up a lot of different dates. At that time, the council all agreed that we could have March 19th, Saturday, March 19th, as our retreat date. But unfortunately, I'm going to need to cancel that for lack of quorum. So I just learned this week that three of the council members will not be able to make that meeting. So we'll have to reschedule at a future date. But it is critical, council, that we do get some dates set for these work sessions and retreats. Got a great deal of topics to go over, a great deal of work that the city needs to complete. And I surely hope that you can make it a priority in your schedules to be able to schedule some time so we can move some of this work forward. And then just a reminder that on March 29th, the AWC legislative wrap-up will be conducted. As you know, I believe tomorrow is the last day for the 2022 legislative, short legislative session for the state of Washington. And on the 29th at 1 o'clock, and we'll go from 1 o'clock to 2:15, there'll be a legislative wrap-up. If any of the council members would like to attend, please let Maria know so she can get you registered. So that's all I have this evening for the council. Next is the attorney's report. City Attorney, do you have anything for the council this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I do. Riverside Estates, additional progress has been made. Last Friday, the Superior Court entered its written order approving the sale of properties to the city free and clear of liens, including several tracts with stormwater improvements, water sewer infrastructure that had liens on it. And so the receiver is going to be able to sell those tracts to the city free and clear of any liens. So that was good news. And we're moving forward with getting Riverside Estates wrapped up. In the legislature, the legislature passed in gross substitute House Bill 1329, which modifies several provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act. And it seems like over the last couple of years, meeting remotely has become the normal practice now. Although before the pandemic, remote meetings were somewhat limited. We had to have at least one person at a physical location that the public could be at where other council members or the mayor could phone into or access remotely, but there was a physical presence requirement. Obviously, we haven't been doing that for the last over a year. And so the substitute House Bill has sort of taken our experience over the last year, year and a half and modified requirements or provisions of the Open Public Meetings Act to deal with remote access. And so kind of a high-level review of that legislation. And it hasn't been signed by the governor yet, but given the overwhelming bipartisan support for the bill, I'm sure that the governor's going to sign it. So under the bill, cities, counties are encouraged to increase public access to meetings through remote access. We're encouraged to make the video recordings of our meetings available online for at least six months. So I think La Center is well-positioned to do both of those things. When we hold executive sessions, we need to announce the purpose of the executive session. We've been doing that. And the purpose needs to be entered in the minutes of the meeting. We've been doing that as well, but now those are requirements of the OPMA. Now going to be a requirement that we provide an opportunity for public comment at every regular meeting where final action is taken. We have been doing that for as long as I've been the city attorney. We can make public comment available either orally or in written format. If public comment is to be provided in writing, cities can require a reasonable deadline by which the public comment is to be submitted. I think our current practice is by 4:00 PM of the date of the meeting. So we're already doing that. Written comment needs to be distributed to all members of the governing body. We are already doing that. A new requirement is if somebody requests an opportunity to provide oral comment at a meeting that is being conducted and due to a disability, they can only participate remotely. The city is required, when feasible, to provide an opportunity for a person to make that public comment remotely. So that is a new requirement. And while we are now pretty used to including a remote component to our meetings, we will now, under state law, be required to provide that ability for people who cannot appear physically due to a disability. There are some pretty tactical adjustments in the Open Public Meetings Act having to deal with meetings and meeting remotely in the event of an emergency. Essentially, those come down to limiting public access to a remote meeting during an emergency. That is allowed under this revision of the Public Meetings Act. But we need to provide, if we do that, if we have an emergency either declared at a local level or a state level, we need to provide the ability for the public to at least listen to the meeting remotely. So those are kind of the revisions to the Open Public Meetings Act. And I expect we'll see the governor signing that bill in the near future.
Is there a date that that goes into effect, Bronson, once he signs it?
It'll be 90 days after the governor's signature.
Okay.
So early summer.
Perfect.
Any other questions?
Yep, does the mask mandate on the 21st ending and such, does that allow us to go back to public meetings?
Good question. So the governor moved the lifting of the mask mandate from the 21st to the 12th. So coming right up. I've looked for, we are regulated by the guidance for business meetings for various venues. And while the governor has made this announcement and press releases, we have not seen a actual formal proclamation or guidance issued by the Department of Health or the Department of Labor and Industries. So I think to answer your question, we will see the lifting of mask mandates for our meetings. But the details of that have not been released in guidance so far. So right now, we are still regulated by the guidance for business meetings for various venues, which still has a mask mandate in it. I would be surprised if that didn't change in the next two or three days. So just to kind of recap where we're at with our meetings and the ability to hold those meetings in person. We've had that ability to meet in person for some time now, you know, several months. But if we meet in person, we still have to have a remote component to the meeting. So the public still has to be able to observe and participate in the meeting remotely. Right now, there still is a mask mandate. Expect that to be lifted. And the social distancing requirement has been removed for, again, several months now.
Mayor, do we have the new city hall set up for video?
We're in the process of getting it set up. The monitors have been put up. We're working on the sound system right now. So city staff continues to make that, I guess, install the technology necessary to be able to conduct these meetings as prescribed here by the city attorney.
Right, but those don't go into effect until after 90 days of signature.
Yeah, but the city's moving ahead to get those technologies in place.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, I want to see us get back into open meetings there in public. You know, getting that moving faster than waiting for the cameras to go into place before the law actually states. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, we all want to get back to in-person meetings. It's high priority. Did you have anything else, Bronson?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, so council, any questions for the city attorney this evening? Okay, thank you for your report, Bronson. Next, our council comments. Council member Fox.
I don't have anything to share this evening, but good evening and happy to be here.
Okay, thank you. Council member Casper.
I don't have anything specific tonight, but I too have been following the current legislative session as there's a few bills that are, that are pretty critical to government, specifically law enforcement. So there's, there's a lot of things that could change here pretty soon, some for the better even. And may have some questions later on in the presentation, but that's it for right now.
Okay, thank you. Council member Boyle.
No comment from me tonight.
Thank you. Council member Strobin.
Yeah, La Center Little League was scheduled to start their baseball season for all those parents on the 19th and has pushed it out to the following weekend. I think that was notified just a couple of days ago. Is that correct, Casey? Wasn't it a couple of days ago?
Yeah, it was. They were initially doing the opening ceremonies on the 19th. But because of the league scheduling, it got pushed back to the 26th.
I just wanted to make sure parents were aware of that and residents that want to come down and enjoy the games. That's all I have for tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Council member Servini.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to express my appreciation and thanks to all of those who continue to join us remotely. I know it's burdensome for all of us, but I appreciate the patience as we work through this and start seeing the light at the end of the tunnel. I'd also like to remind everybody that time changed this weekend. And as council member Strobin mentioned, the spring sports startup will mean we have a lot of youngsters on the streets and crossing busy streets. So let's pass the word and slow those speeds down and be aware of kids not necessarily paying attention when they cross the street. So be cautious.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, council, next on the agenda are staff reports. We do have three staff reports this evening. And the first one will be the community development staff report. And Mr. Jeff Bronson will be presenting. Jeff?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Good to be with you this evening. Just a few updates. First is project number one, which is the Lockwood Creek subdivision. This one came in last year for pre-application conference and has submitted an application for subdivision on February 1st. That application was deemed complete on February 15th. So I expect to see this one going to the hearings examiner in the not-too-distant future. Number four is minute management. The applicant submitted their third set of plans with changes for the hotel to the city on February 17th. And we submitted a response. And a fourth set of architectural review comments on March 1st and are awaiting their response to those review comments. Next one is project number nine. This is the Highland Terrace subdivision. There's one phase for which they've submitted final plat review. And the city has indicated that construction items need to be completed for that phase before the final plat can be approved. There's also a post-decision review for intersection improvements that was submitted on January 6th. Holly Park subdivision, that's number 10. That's the next one. And this project is largely complete. Tappany Construction completed some punch list items on the infrastructure and the public right-of-way. And the city is in the process of releasing the maintenance bond for those improvements. Number 12, Riverside Estates, Bronson provided some commentary about that project. The applicant has submitted for Phase Two final plat approval and comments were given to them back on February 11th. and comments were given to them back on February eleventh. Number eighteen, which is City Hall, final occupancy was issued on January twenty seven. And the contractor Swinerton is completing some minor punch list items and a talkathon was installed outside the building. Let's see, number twenty one, this is the Tappany Carlson Commercial Project Notice of Application and SEPA were issued on February fourteenth for that one. Number twenty three, the Clark Public Utilities Flow Station. Pre-application notes were sent out to the applicant on February first. Number twenty four, Aces View Subdivision held a pre-application conference on February second, distributed notes from that pre-app on February fifteenth. Number twenty five is the La Center High School Green Shed. And there were, there was a pre-application meeting held on February eighth and the notes from the pre-app were distributed on February seventeenth. And finally, the Manning subdivision, that's number twenty six. This is a thirty-nine lot subdivision on a twenty acre parcel that's immediately east of La Center High School. And the pre-application meeting for that one was held on the eighth, so just yesterday. So we are definitely in the season of pre-apps and subdivisions and so probably a lot of hearings examiner activity coming up. Happy to entertain any questions that the council has. Okay, thank you mayor.
Thank you Jeff, appreciate it. The next staff report we have this evening is the Public Works Staff Report and Mr. Tony Cooper will be presenting. Tony?
Thank you mayor, city council. We're gonna go over all the operations side of things and first I'm gonna talk about the Public Works operations, streets and facilities. Public Works continues to work on keeping city properties maintained and drainage systems clear throughout the city. Public Works Crew is continuously monitoring repairing potholes, that's ongoing consistently as they come up. Public Works Staff will be performing annual maintenance on all the vehicles and equipment and as they get time to do this with all the other work they're doing, they periodically work on these vehicles. So staff also continues to work on adding some features to the new city hall building, which was talked about just a minute ago, such as new TV monitors, there's a couple of TV monitors in the council chambers and they're working on the sound system now. They've also updated, upgraded the landscape facilities outside and as, I don't know if you recall, but the, there was a stream outside the building and it was stagnant for a long time, so our operations crew has modified that to make it a dry river, like a river rock stream and landscape with bark dust, so it looks a lot better than it did before. The next thing are the parks and grounds, the Public Works Crew has been removing graffiti and cleaning up areas due to vandalism at the parks and so they have been coordinating or working with the police department to try to stop this problem. The battleground work crews are assisting on a limited basis and I just saw them, I think a week ago, they were out there working. So on the personnel, personnel side, the Public Works Lead Aaron has been working with contractors to finalize some of the minor details that were not included in the construction contract with Swinerton. And these include final security system and the lock, and the lock system. You know, the lock system has a certain key hierarchy. You know, all the doorways, they have a hierarchy, so they have to be keyed to all these, all the locks that are required for these different offices and, and areas, so currently staff are working on normal shifts and appropriate safety precautions being followed. On the wastewater operations side, all plant parameters remain well within compliance of the NPDS permits. The plant continues to perform during high, high flow rain events. As rain comes up, it adds more flow to the system, so they have to, they have to monitor that, keep track of it. The annual stack emissions testing for the biosolids oil heater, and that's the solids press, has been completed and the passing, passing results were sent to Southwest Clean Area Agency, which is a permit requirement. So on the advent side, the, on the February two thousand twenty-two DMR data is being compiled for submission to the Department of Ecology and that's required every month, that report has to go in, so they're working on the February report now. The annual biosolids and waste load assessment reports have been completed and submitted to the Department of Ecology, Department of Ecology. The annual emissions report has been completed and submitted to Southwest Cleaning Area Agency, that's the overall report, I believe. And the plant staff is currently working regular shifts. Now, as been reported, as has been reported before, there's a SCADA system that's been installed, a new SCADA system at the treatment plant and it monitors all the pump stations. And so they've just installed the workstation, the new workstation with this new system and they're working out the they're debugging it now with the old system, so they continue working on that to make sure it works, works correctly. The staff is currently working on the comot membrane delivery and that's the one the council approved a couple of meetings ago and they're set to start replacing those or getting those in June and to replace the those obsolete membranes that, that are required to be replaced. So then under the building apartment permitting and construction is still progressing, but there's been some seasonal slowing, which is kind of typical of the wet season, staff has conducted on average eight to ten stops per day resulting in eighteen to thirty inspections per day for both residential and commercial. Staff has taken in twenty-seven building permits so far in two thousand twenty-two. The new middle school has temporary occupancy and they're, they're trying to get final occupancy, there's still a couple little items they need to take care of to get that, but it should be, should be happening here in the near future. Teresa's Little School has been granted a third temporary occupancy for ninety days to set, to end in April. The building official continues to work with Gentile Investments to achieve the final occupancy, there's, this is a tentative improvement, there's several improvements in there, so they're, they're trying to work on getting occupancy in all those. The building official has begun inspections on the apartment complex in Riverside Estates and anticipates an increase in inspections as the weather gets closer. They've been pouring foundations out there for these apartment complexes, so as the weather gets better, they're gonna start probably working a little faster and and you'll see some, some buildings, building going on here fairly soon. The city has architectural plan review, review comments for minute management is, as Jeff Swanson just talked about. You know, responses from, from the applicant on those comments and under stormwater staff continues to work on cleaning ditches, catch bases and culverts for the storm system and that's an ongoing thing as weather, weather changes, so. Are there any questions on the report?
Not on the report Tony, but I do have a question, I'm noticing the road up there, La Center Road starting to degrade even more and I know it was in the budget and we talked about getting a contract out for it to be fixed. And I'm not sure if it's too soon to start that process, but where are we at with it?
So I'm working on, I'm working on with the CPU, so this, this is a joint project. So as, as you're aware, the city received TIB funding to pave that westbound lane and do some reconstruction of part of the lane. Clark Public Utilities needs to replace the existing water line that's substandard and there it's too small for the amount of development that's happened in La Center and so the city is coordinating with CPU on this project, we're working on plans right now. And we anticipate in the next month or so, it'll probably go out to bid. So I've been coordinating with TIB on that and so, you know, it'll just be a matter of, you know, this project is really a dry weather type project, so. You know, May, June, that's, that's really when it's gonna start, but, but plans are being prepared now and they're, they're fairly close to being done.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey Tony, I, I don't know if you guys are aware or not, but it looks like there's a, one of the park benches is broken on, well, south side of Fourth Street right before Aspen. Are you aware of that or is that something that's being checked?
No, I don't, maybe our staff knows, I'll, I'll, we'll let them know about it, they may have already been know about that and just, just haven't coordinated with our office yet, but, but we'll, we'll make sure that they know about that, but thank you for bringing that up. Yes, that's on, what was it again, on Aspen you said?
Fourth and Aspen on the, on the south side of the road.
Okay, we will let them know, thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Tony this evening, council? Okay, I'd just like to take another, just a quick moment to welcome our new Public Works Director Brian Cast. He is with us here this evening on the meeting, he began his employment last Thursday and he's very engaged right now with all the activities here in the city, so I'm just excited that Brian's on board with us and I know he's got a full plate and I'm gonna look forward to continue to work with him, so.
Thank you mayor, happy to be here.
Okay, our third staff report this evening is the HR staff report and our contract, human resources contractor will be presenting, Ms. Janice Corbin, Janice?
Good morning, or good morning, good evening mayor, council members and community, just a couple of updates for everyone's information. First and foremost, we did do some recruiting and post the job for a wastewater treatment plant operator, a certified three, which is actually at the top of the tier. The next up is a certified four, Matt Jenkins was a certified four, so we're looking for somebody with not only time and place, but also experience. I just checked a few minutes ago and there are eighteen wastewater vacancies in the state, which does not include the King County or regional, their Clark Regional or the, the city or any of the entities in Clark County, so we have eighteen, this is a pretty competitive job. It's hard to have vacant, or have applicants apply. We had a couple of applicants, we've interviewed them, we're down to a finalist and we hope to be giving an offer to someone this week, we'll wait and see, I'm still doing some reference checks and public records requests on the finalist. We are also looking for a building official, as many of you may recall, Jim Perry is going to be retiring, this is also an equally challenging job to fill. There are nineteen, I'm sorry, fourteen of those positions available in cities similar to our size and above, it does not include the bigger cities, again, these are just comparable cities. We had two or three applicants, we're down to a finalist and we hope to extend, extend a job offer for that individual tomorrow and hope to get them started toward the end of the month, and so they'll have a few days with Jim Perry before he retires. Number two is the inter-local agreement for the Clark County Regional Wastewater. Now we're going to do it in a different format besides inter-local, but I did put some time into that, we need to have an official agreement with them that indicates that they will continue to let us use Matt Jenkins when for, as a content expert in wastewater, because there's, again, very few operator fours in the state, maybe a dozen all total, and if we have an emergency, why we are still onboarding our staff. We're hoping to schedule and present a series of workshops for all employees because we haven't done any training for a couple of years, we're in the transitioning of staff, we're gonna wait till the new staff comes on board. But some of those topics, Clark, if you could pull up the next page, some of the topics there you will see are discrimination, harassment and retaliation, ethics, gratuities and gifts, the electronic policy, whistleblower protection, protective leaves, the performance evaluation, training, employee conduct. So that training will be over a series of weeks, probably in ninety, ninety-minute sessions or two hours. We counsel the leadership regarding Paid Leave Act, responsibility pay, which is included in our Teamsters contract and then the PERS retirement limitations, because there is always a discussion when somebody retires that they'll come back in a consultant capacity, but that is in fact prohibited by the state retirement system or at least limited, so we will be having more discussions about that. And so did those, that research because of the, of the Paid Family Leave Act, many of you may know that one. That's a, a state provision and so we have an employee who would be eligible for that in the near future. And then also along with Maria and Jeff Swanson, we talked with AWC's Risk Management Representatives about the options specific to risk liability regarding police services and the options that are being considered alternative to the proposed one for King County so that we could get that, you have, you always have to check with your risk management operators to take a look at this and have some counsel on that. It sounds like that after the staff meeting today that they talked to Jeff as well and that we should have some opinion from them or at least an opinion from the risk management pool probably in the next two weeks. So that's the report, questions from the council?
Yeah, for these really competitive jobs that, that we're seeking, is there incentives that are being offered to some of these applicants or has that been considered?
We have not offered consented, or we have not offered incentive to the competitive ones at this point. We have advertised it across the state. Actually, for the building official, I advertise it nationally for WABOS, but we have not given the, the incentive, I will be honest with you, we will probably have to go out of state because of the competition and the limited number of professionals. Unfortunately, for both of these people, just like it is in policing, you have to have time in the job and official certifications. And many of the positions will end up being contracted out because there just aren't people in the state. One of the applicants that we did have for the building official was from Oregon and would have to get the certification here, but there's a reciprocal relationship with the certification agencies like DOE. And I recently, about a year ago, did a selection process for a wastewater treatment plant and we ended up hiring somebody from Phoenix and Kansas to fill the wastewater. They're not, the whole COVID thing slowed down the testing process for that particular industry. So we have not considered the incentive at this point.
Yeah, the rest of that info is not surprising to hear in today's job market. My thought is that that's, that's probably going to be something that we should look into in order to put our city at the top of the, the list for those, for those applicants.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Janice, any other questions for Janice this evening on her report? Okay, very good, thank you. So that concludes our staff reports for this evening and it also concludes our meeting. So it's right now eight o'clock, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting, all in favor say aye. It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, council. I hope everybody has a great evening. Bye now.